All praises to the Most High, Yahweh and his son Yahweh Shabbos. So today's class is we're gonna be reading over Acts chapter eight. Uh so we're gonna go, we're gonna dive into that. Uh last class, if you, if you missed the last class, uh we, we read Acts chapter, actually we're gonna dive into Acts, uh chapter, uh, chapter nine. And then, so if you missed chapter eight or seven, you probably wanna go back and watch my last videos. Um, so you can get the full breakdown on that. But, uh, so today, we're gonna kinda go back over, uh, Acts, like I said, chapter, chapter nine as well. But I'm gonna go and read, uh, chapter seven, verse thirty-four real quick. Cause I kinda wanna go back on that real quick. I wanna kinda, now this was talking about, um, basically the Ethiopian man, right? The Anub, he had great authority under the, uh, under Candace, the queen of Elizabeth. Right? The queen of the Ethiopian, who had the charge of all her treasure and had come to Jerusalem for it to worship. Right? So, uh, this man was pretty much, uh, you know, trying to meet up with, uh, with, 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 with the brother here, the brother, uh, Simon. So he met up with Simon and everything and, uh, you know, I just kinda wanna read verse thirty-four again, where he said, uh, the Anub answered, uh, actually it was Philip. And he said, "The Anub answered Philip and said, 'I prayed thee, of whom speaketh the prophet this.'" So he's asking Philip, who, who was Philip getting, you know, who's speaking to Philip, right? Is, is, is speak, is, is Philip speaking of himself or is Philip, uh, speaking of some other man, right? Cause this goes on to say, they said, "I prayed thee, of whom speaketh the prophet this, of himself or of some other man." Right? So also make sure you guys, um, are following along. Make sure you guys have your, uh, your Bible together. Uh, make sure you have your KJV Bible and make sure you have, uh, a pen and paper handy so you can take notes. Um, but always make sure you following along with these scriptures and make sure you following along with me. Because if you're not, then you know, you're not gonna get the full breakdown. You're not gonna understand it. So hopefully you're not just watching me, uh, you actually are, you know, getting your Bible out and you know what I'm saying? Going along with these scriptures. So, uh, make sure you guys are, you know what I'm saying? Uh, getting your Bible out if you wanna do this Bible study with me, cause like I say, I only have one hour on this video. So you wanna make sure that you are, uh, you know, got your Bible out and you ready to go. Uh, and you following along with Acts, chapter, chap, right now we at Acts, chapter eight, verse thirty-four. So get your Bible out and go ahead and, uh, pull that scripture real quick. Uh, but then we're gonna jump over to Acts, chapter nine, verse one. So, uh, Acts, chapter eight, verse thirty-four says, "And the Anub answered Philip and said, 'I prayed thee, of whom speaketh the prophet this.'" Also too, if you guys have any questions, um, you can always ask questions on, on this live while I'm, you know, going through my, my Bible study and everything, right? So, um, you can always ask questions and, you know, whatever you wanna do there. So I'll answer them as I go along, as quickly as humanly possible. But, uh, so let's go back to, uh, this, this scripture here, thirty-four, it says, uh, "And the Anub answered Philip and said, 'I prayed thee, of whom speaketh the prophet this, of himself or of some other man.'" Right? So Philip said, you know, it's of some other, it's, it's, it's of some other man, right? Because you gotta understand that Philip is not speaking of himself, right? And you, if you read verse thirty-five, it says, "Then Philip opened his mouth." So it's telling you right there that Philip is beginning to preach, right? Kinda like what I'm doing right now, right? I'm opening my mouth to preach to you, right? The word of God. I'm here, I'm, I'm opening my mouth to preach to you, uh, you know, the scriptures, right? Cause remember the scripture says what? "Out of his belly shell flowed rivers of living water," right? So you gotta understand that that's what Philip was doing, right? Out of his belly was flowing rivers of living water, right? So he opened his mouth, uh, and he flowed out these scriptures, man, precept upon precept, right? So, um, and he was moving forward with the precepts, cause sometimes, like we told, talked about in the last video, and then sometimes you could be reading precepts, you could be doing precepts, but you could be moving backwards in the precepts, right? But Philip on this, in this, you know, in this instance, Philip was actually moving forward in the precepts. So it says, "Then Philip opened his mouth and began at the same scripture and preached unto him Christ." So you have to understand that, uh, Philip wasn't preaching of himself. Philip was preaching of Christ. And so a lot of times, man, when you, when you preaching Christ, uh, you know, a lot of times people don't really quite fully understand Christ. Right? So, uh, and we're gonna get into that. Let's go to, uh, chapter nine, verse one. Acts, chapter nine, verse one. So we're gonna read on down. "And Saul yet breathing out threatenings and slaughter against the disciples of the Lord went unto the high priest." Let's get, um, let me see, what did we stop off at here? We actually stopped at verse, uh, chapter ten, right? So we're gonna go ahead and start at chapter ten, actually about, so let me go, let me see, where we stop off at? Uh, let me see, where we stopped? I think we stopped at chapter nine, verse, twenty. Okay, so we stepped, we, we stopped at chapter nine, verse twenty. I think that's when we stopped at yesterday. Uh, there for yesterday, I think. Right? So let's, cause, so we was talking about Saul, right? Saul ended up, see Saul was a Pharisee. Saul was a Pharisee and he eventually received the spirit of Christ. He eventually got called by God to, uh, preach the true doctrine of Christ, right? Cause at first he was a Pharisee, right? The Pharisees of the Pharisees. But he eventually started to, and make sure that, uh, if you are listening in, make sure you, uh, check, give me a thumbs up or a one if you can hear me, uh, cause a lot of times, you know, I have sound issues. And so just make sure you can't hear me, just give me a one or, uh, or something like that to make sure you can hear me. Um, and it says right here, so we did, we stopped off at chapter nine, verse, uh, we'll just start at, um, we stopped at, okay, so good. Okay, so you guys can hear me, alright, cool, cool, cool. "And he had seen in a vision name, Anias, coming in and putting his hands on him, and he might receive his sight." Okay, so we stopped at chapter fifteen somewhere in there, about fourteen. Alright, so we're gonna start at fifteen. We're gonna start at fifteen, chapter nine, verse fifteen. Come, come, come. Um, so chapter nine, head over to chapter nine, verse fifteen, if you got your Bible with you. You probably, if you don't, get you a Bible, uh, or pull it up on your phone. But you definitely wanna follow along with this, with this live, because it's, it gets pretty heavy. It gets pretty, it gets, sometimes it gets really, really heavy. So if you, if you're not, like, if you retain more information when you're looking at the scriptures versus me talking, right? So, and that's a big deal, right? So you wanna retain at least about forty percent of what you actually see versus what you actually, uh, you hear, right? So we're gonna get chapter nine, verse fifteen, we're gonna just start there. "But the Lord said unto him," right? So the Most High said unto him, "Go thy way." He said unto Saul, "Go thy way, for he is a chosen vessel unto me." See, he, Saul became a chosen vessel unto the Most High. From, he went from Pharisee of the Pharisees, from hating the Jews, from slaughtering the Jews, from murdering the Jews, from talking back to, like, backbiting against the Jews, all this stuff. He, he went from that to, uh, being conflicted in his heart, being humiliated, to eventually, you know, choosing the right path. So a lot of people that are Pharisees today, a lot of people that are cornerly minded today can actually be converted into, uh, the spirit of Christ, right? So it says, "But the Lord said unto him, 'Go thy way, for he is a chosen vessel unto me, to bear my name before the Gentiles.'" Right? And so we know who the Gentiles are during this time. The Gentiles, you had two sects of Gentiles. You had the Gentiles, the actual strangers, and then you had the Gentiles that are actual Israelites that have a Gentile state of mind. So you have two types of Gentiles at this point. "But the Most High said unto him, 'Go thy way, for he is a chosen vessel unto me, to bear my name before the Gentiles, in the king, in the children of Israel.'" Right? So, uh, and then it's also saying, "For I will show him how great things he must suffer for my name's sake." So he's gonna show Saul how, 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 all the great things that, that he must suffer for his name, for, for the Most High name's sake, man. Right? So this is what you gotta do, right? You gotta suffer for Most High name's sake, right? Uh, so you know, the Most High gonna show you these great things that you must suffer for his sake, right? So you gotta understand that this is applying to you. This, you gotta look within. You gotta know that this scripture is talking about you and what you must suffer for, for the Most High sake, right? "And Anias went his way and entered into the house and put in his hands on him. He said, 'Brother Saul, the Lord, Yahweh, even Christ, that appeared unto thee in the ways as thou camest, has sent me, that thou mightest receive thy sight.'" See, because Saul was, you know, blinded at this time, right? Cause remember the Most High, Christ said he gonna be blinded for a little while, right? Cause he was being conflicted in his heart, right? He said, "You gonna receive thy sight." So he, he met up with this guy named Anias and he said, "You gonna receive thy sight. You gonna start receiving thy sight, right? Uh, you gonna start to understand what, what, how to walk correctly, right? How to really get this understanding." And so he started receiving his sight, cause remember we said to you that being a blind man is not somebody that is legally blind, right? It's not somebody that is physically blind. It's somebody that is blind in the spirit, right? So that's what it's talking about. It's not, it's not talking about a physical blind, right? And receiving your sight in the physical. It's talking about a, 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 a spiritual blind, right? Where you can be blind in your mind. You could be walking around like a Gentile in your mind, thinking that you calling yourself a Hebrew Israelite, right? So that's the, that's the sight that he's trying to get you to understand. "Has sent me, that thou mightest receive thy sight," right? So, and, and be filled with the Holy Ghost, right? Be filled with the Holy Spirit, right? So this guy Saul is gonna be filled with the Holy Spirit and he's gonna receive the sight and the understanding of the Most High, right? And he says, "And immediately there fell from his eyes, as it had been, scales." Right? See, cause a lot of people got veils over their eyes. A lot of people got scales over their eyes, right? And he received sight for a week, right? So he received sight for a week and arose and was baptized. So this Pharisee, this, 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 this corner minded Pharisee man, actually received the sight in the spirit of the Most High and he started receiving his sight and started being baptized, right? And we already talked about what baptism really is. Baptism is just preaching of the word and receiving the word, right? So if you're receiving this word right now, this new song that I'm preaching to you right now, then you're being baptized as of right now. As on this live, you're being baptized by the Holy Spirit, right? So just like, uh, just like Anias baptized Saul is the same way that I'm, me baptizing you on this live, right? So that's what that means to be baptized. See, a lot of people think baptism means dunking your head underwater, right? That is far from the truth, right? Baptism just means that you're actually receiving the word that I'm receiving, that you're, that you're getting right now as I'm teaching this word. And when he had received meat, see, cause when you receive meat, you gotta understand, how do you receive meat? First, you have to be weaned from the milk. And once you're weaned from the milk, then you can receive that meat. Then you can receive the meat of the scriptures, right? Cause that's the problem. A lot of people still haven't received the meat of the scriptures. A lot of people still on milk, right? And so, you know, if you still ain't on precept upon precepts, you probably still on milk, right? So once you get on precept upon precept and then, then you can go, once you read your entire Bible, right? From, from Genesis to Revelation, then you go back and you precept and different things like that. Then you start to get on that meat. Then you start to understand the different doctrines and stuff like that, right? Cause the Bible is all about the doctrine, right? And I want you to, I want you to understand that because, uh, let's go back to Isaiah twenty-eight and nine real quick. Uh, let's get the precept on that, right? About the doctrine. Because a lot of people fail to realize that the Bible is all about doctrine, right? So when people say, "Well, I wanna know what doctrine you on." Right? You exactly right. I wanna know exactly what doctrine you're on. Because guess what? If you on the wrong doctrine, then that means you on the wrong song. And you might be a corner Israelite. But if you on the right doctrine, then you, that means you on the right song. And then that means you are, you are a spiritually minded Israelite like Christ. And that's what Christ wants you to do. He wants you to become a spiritually minded Israelite, not a corner minded Israelite. So doctrine separates the corner minded Israelites from the spiritually minded Israelites, okay? So we trying to get people more spiritual on this live. We're trying to get more people more spiritual in this teaching, right? We're trying to baptize people with the word of God, right? We're trying to get you more spiritual in your mind and in your heart and in your lips and in your eyes, right? We're trying to get you more spiritually minded, right? So let's get Isaiah, chapter twenty-eight and nine. It says, "Whom shall he teach knowledge?" Right? So who are you, who's supposed to really be out here teaching this knowledge, right? It says, "Whom shall he make to understand doctrine?" Right? We just got through reading in Acts nine, that who's supposed to be understanding this doctrine? This meat, right? Cause meat is doctrine, right? So we were just reading right here where it says, right here it says, "But all that heard him were amazed," right? So it says, uh, chap, uh, verse eighteen, uh, Acts, chapter nine, verse eighteen, it says, "And immediately there fell from his eyes, as it had been, scales." Right? See, a lot of people got them scales over their eyes. They got a lot of veils over their eyes, right? They can't see what we're trying to teach them. They can't hear what we're trying to teach them, right? And receive sight for a week, right? So this brother Saul received the sight, cause he let that veil go. He let that veil go over his eyes, right? So sometimes you might be seeing me, you might be hearing me, but you don't actually hear me. You might be seeing me, but you don't actually see me, right? So understand that, just because you hearing my words, just because you listening to me, don't mean you actually listening to me, right? Just because you see what I'm saying, don't mean that you actually seeing what I'm actually saying. Understand that. That's, that's what's going on here. And when he had received meat, right? When he had received the meat, right? That's verse nineteen, it says, "He was strengthened." So that's how you strengthen your walk with God, right? The only way to, to strengthen your walk with God is you have to receive the meat of God. You have to receive the meat to strengthen your walk, right? And it says, "Whom shall he teach knowledge? And whom shall he make to understand the meat, the doctrine?" Right? Cause so you can be strengthened, right? So you can strengthen your spirit, right? So you can go and teach somebody else the same thing that I'm teaching you, right? So that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to get fishers, man. We're trying to get more fishers of men, right? So I don't wanna be out here preaching the word by myself. I want more and more people, more and more brothers mainly, out here preaching the word along with me, right? So we gotta, let's get the scripture on that as well, to, so that way I can get you a full understanding of what the mission is, what God, what, what, what Christ really want all of us to be able to do, right? And it says, in Matthew, chapter fourteen, verse nineteen, uh, it says, "And he said unto them," right? "Follow me," right? That's the same thing I'm doing right here on this slide, right? I'm telling you to follow me, right? "And I will make you fishers of men," right? So that's the same thing I'm telling you, is the same thing Christ was telling his disciples, right? So you gotta understand that, that you gotta look within. You gotta look within. If you wanna become a fisher of men, you gotta first learn the doctrine. You have to first learn the, 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 the doctrine, right? The meat. So that way you can be strengthened in the, in the spirit. And then once you strengthened in the spirit, then, you know, you can deal with your brothers and sisters in the way that you see best, right? As a physician, right? So you supposed to see, uh, what these brothers and sisters are going through and you should be able to, you know, help them, right? To, to, to give back, right? Because remember what Christ said. He says, "Freely we shall receive, freely we shall what? Give and, and, and receive," right? So it says, "And he said unto them, 'Follow me, and I will make you fishers of men.'" Right? So this is how you become fishers of men, man. You gotta learn from a brother that strengthened in the spirit. And then once you learn from a brother that strengthened in the spirit, then you can go out here and teach somebody the same thing. You can teach somebody the same, the same doctrine, right? Them that are weaned from the milk, right? So thi- this is how, you gotta be weaned from the milk and drawn from the breast. So those are the brothers and sisters that supposed to be teaching, uh, this doctrine, right? Okay, so let's go back to Acts, chapter nine, verse nineteen, right? And so Saul was immediately baptized and when he had received meat, the doctrine, right? He was strengthened. "Then was saw certain days with the disciples, which were at Damascus." Right? So now Saul is hanging out with the disciples, man, at Damascus. And straight away, he preached Christ in the synagogue, that he is the son of God. So man, Saul preached Christ is the son of God, man. This man went from a Pharisee to preaching that Christ is the son of God. Man, that is a miracle in itself, right there. See, you looking for that miracle in, you know, in the sky. You looking for that chariot in the sky. You looking for that miracle, like, you know, that water baptism type of miracle, man. You looking for that Christ to be walking on water and different things like that, man. See, you looking for that outward miracle, right? But see, you not realizing that the inward miracle, the inward miracle within yourself, right? Because like, if I can take somebody that's a Pharisee and change them into a actual, and, and, and bring them into the Holy Spirit and, and so they, they, we can, they can receive faith, right? And increase their faith and different things like that, that's also a miracle, right? So that, you gotta understand the inward miracle, right? See, a lot of people out here, they in the, they still on that outward miracle. They not understanding that inward, the inward miracle, man, right? So in straight way, he preached Christ in the, in the churches, in the synagogue, that he is the son of God, man. "But all that heard him were amazed and said, 'Is not this he that destroyed them, which called on his name in Jerusalem? And came hither for that intent, that he might bring the bound, them bound unto the chief priests?'" Right? See, cause Saul at first was a Pharisee, man. He was the, he was, he was the top, top, top of the line, man. He, he was able to go to the chief priests and bound all of the Israelites into prison, right? But then, you know, he got conflicted in his heart and Christ began to, he, he began to receive the spirit of Christ, right? Through, through the brother, uh, through the brother, uh, Philip, right? So in Anias. So that's how he received the spirit of Christ. And so now, this same brother that was persecuting the Jews and persecuting the brothers with the spirit of Christ, is now receiving the spirit, right? He's now receiving it. Now all these Jews asking like, isn't this the brother that was a Pharisee, right? "But Saul increased more in his strength and confounded the Jews, which were dwelt at Damascus, proving that this is very Christ. This is very the Christ, man. This is surely Christ." Verse twenty-three, it says, "And after that many days were fulfilled." So after that, many days were fulfilled, man. "And Jews took counsel to kill him." So, uh, you, so you got a lot of wicked Jews out here, man. They still out here being wicked as hell, man. They out here trying to still take counsel to kill him, man, right? So just because you receive the spirit of Christ, you gonna have a lot of haters when you receive the spirit of Christ, right? So they took counsel to kill him, but their laying awake was known of Saul. And they watched the gates day and night to kill him, right? So, but, so it was a lot of brothers and sisters that, that Saul was hanging with. Back then, you know, when he was a Pharisee, see, a lot of, uh, a lot of the Jews that was with him during this time was laying in wait, right? All of his other, you know, previous, you know, friends and different things like that. They was looking around, looking for him, right? They like, "Man, how you gonna just switch up on us, man?" Right? And so Saul switched up on them, man, and they watched the gates day and night to kill him, man. So they watched day and night to kill this brother, man, right? "Then the disciples took him by night and let him down by the wall in a basket," right? So, and when Saul was come to Jerusalem, he is saved to join himself to the disciples. "But they were all afraid of him and believed not that he was a disciple." Right? So a lot of brothers and sisters still didn't believe that this brother was a disciple, even though he took on the discipleship. They thought he was the FBI or something, man. They thought he was CIA, man. They thought that he was trying to conspire against them, man, right? So a lot of people still didn't trust him, even after he received the Holy Ghost, even after he received the Holy Spirit, right? Even though he, even after he received the meat, right? And, and, and started to begin to, uh, you know, teach the precepts and different things like that. A lot of brothers and sisters in the Jews, they still didn't receive this brother, man. Because, you know, they didn't know if he was, you know, still on the side of the, uh, of the enemy, right? And so when Saul was come to Jerusalem, he is saved to join himself to the disciples. "But they were afraid, all afraid of him, and believed not that he was a disciple," right? "But Barnabas took him and brought him to the apostles," right? So Barnabas took him and brought him to the apostles, man, and, and declared unto them how he had seen the Lord in the, in the way, and that he had spoken to him and, and how he had preached boldly at Damascus in the name of Christ, right? So here he is, he, he, he's trying to tell them, uh, you know, uh, 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 Barnabas is trying to tell the people that this brother is, you know, he's giving them edification. He's giving them, all the people, edification, like, hey, this, this brother really was preaching in the, uh, synagogues and stuff and teaching Christ, right? He wasn't teaching no other doctrine. He was teaching Christ, right? And he really has converted over to, to the Holy Spirit, right? So a lot of people, you know, that was kinda trying to reassure the Jews not to go ahead and conspire against them and kill him, right? And so, uh, and, and it says, "And he was with them coming in and going out of Jerusalem," right? So he was with them, going in and coming out, right? "And he spake boldly in the name of Christ and disputed against the Grecians," right? "But they went about to slay him, man, which, when the brethren knew, they brought him down to Ca- Kasaria and sent him forth to Tarsus," right? "Then had the church, the churches rest throughout all Judea and Galilee and Samaria, and were edified, right? And walking in the fear of the Lord and in the comfort of the Holy Spirit, were multiplied," right? "And it came to pass, as Peter passed through all quarters, he came down also to the saints, which dwelt at Lydia. And there were, there he found a certain man named Anias, and which had kept his bed eight years, right? And was sick of the paucy," right? So now we got this man that's sick of the paucy, right? Uh, and Peter, like I say, was coming to, and Peter said unto him, "Anias, Christ make it thee whole." So you gotta understand, man, that Christ make you whole. Christ, Christ is the man that makes you whole. If you sick of the paucy, man. If you have, if you, if you a Pharisee, right? Or if you, if you sick, and if you, if you dead in the spirit, right? Christ will make you whole, right? So, you know, you gotta, you gotta, uh, touch on his garment, man. "Arrive and make thy bed," right? And he arose immediately, right? "And all that dwelt at Lydia and Saran saw him and turned to the Most High." "Now therefore was at Joppa a certain disciple named Tabitha, which by interpretation is called Dorcas. This woman was full of good works and Alms, Alms deeds, which she did," right? Okay, and it, it came to pass in those days that she was sick and died. Whom, when they had watched, they laid her in an upper chamber, right? So they laid her in this upper chamber. And for as much as Lydia was nod to Joppa, the disciples had, uh, so she, so Lydia was nod to Joppa, right? So Lydia and Joppa was kinda like, you know, near each other. They kinda was like, you know, kindred towards each other, brothers and sisters, right? They was friends. "And the disciples had heard that Peter was there," right? "They sent unto him two men, desiring him that he, he would not delay to come them, come to them." Right? Then Peter arose and went with them. "When he was come, they brought him into the upper chamber," right? "And all the widows stood by him, him weeping, and showing the coats and garments with Dorcas made, which Dorcas made, while she was with them," right? So, but Peter put all them all forth and kneeled down and prayed, right? And, and turning him to the body, said, "Tabitha, arrive." And she opened her eyes, and when she saw Peter, she sat up, right? So, so when she saw Peter, she sat up, right? Uh, she sat up or whatever. "And he gave her his hand," right? "And lifted her up, and when he called, the saints and widows presented her alive." So this woman was dead. Tabitha was dead, right? But somehow she became alive, right? Through Peter, right? So, uh, so pretty much what's going on is, this is a parable, right? Uh, a lot of people will take this out of context, because they, they're not understanding this, this is a, this is like a parable, right? It, it's basically saying that this woman was dead in the spirit. She was sick, right? She was like, not literal sick, like, like COVID nineteen or anything like that. But she was sick, like, you know, like she probably was dealing with a lot of sin, you know what I'm saying? Like lust or murderer or, you know, whatever the case, right? Pausy, right? She might've had a, 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 a sin of blood, you know what I'm saying? And so, uh, you know, she, she, she had a sin of blood, a sin, she had a, 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 a issue of blood, right? And so an issue of blood is not literal as well, right? An issue of blood is like, you know, you might have spirits on you, like evil spirits on you or whatever, right? You might have, you know, different things like, like evil spirits and different things like that on you, right? Or you might be blind, right? Or you might, you might, you might, you might, you might not can hear, right? Or whatever. You might not can, uh, see, right? So that's what it's talking about when it's saying that she was sick, right? Because Joppa at a certain disciple, right here in verse thirty-six, it says, "Now there was Joppa at a certain disciple named Tabitha," right? "Which by interpretation is called Dorcas," right? "This woman was full of good works and deeds, which she did," right? But eventually, when it came to pass, she was sick and died, right? Because look, a lot of times, man, you gotta understand that you can get sick if you're in the spirit of Christ and you a disciple of Christ. So this is a flip side to things. If you are in the spirit of Christ, right? You need to understand that you cannot get sick, uh, cause a lot of times, even because you have the spirit of Christ, doesn't mean that nothing's gonna help harm you, that nothing's gonna, nothing's gonna happen to you, right? That you can't get tempted by, by the Satan or by, 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 you know, by the world, right? Just because you have the spirit of Christ, you have to understand that you still have to maintain it, right? You still have to maintain anything that you do, right? You have to maintain your marriage. You have to maintain your job. You have to maintain your business, right? So you always have to maintain, just because you have the spirit, the Holy Spirit, and you walking in the law, don't mean that you not gonna get tempted and you not gonna fall sick sometimes, right? Cause a lot of times we still fall sick in the scriptures, right? We still fall sick. We still fall away sometimes and we have to get right back on it, right? So this what happened to this lady right here, right? Uh, it came to pass that she became to get sick, right? And she kinda died, right? It says died, but it's not little. It's saying that she got sick, like, she kinda fell awake, you know what I'm saying? Like she died in the spirit, right? She kinda like just gave up in the spirit, right? Uh, cause even the strongest, man, even the strongest people not, you know, they Uh, cause even the strongest, man, even the strongest people not, you know, they don't, you know, they don't survive this thing, man, right? So even the strongest people don't survive, right? So sometimes they need a little help, man. Sometimes they need a little help from their brothers and sisters, right? So, you know, just because you might be strong or you might feel like you strong in the spirit don't mean it's something that you don't need help, that sometimes you might need to be received. You might need the uh the Holy Spirit uh to be renewed in you, man, right? So a lot of time, that's what's going on, man, just because, so you gotta be renewed in the spirit, right? And so for as much as Lydia was nod to Joppa and the disciples had heard that Peter was there, they sent unto him two men, desiring him that he would not delay to come to them, right? Then Peter arose and went with them. When he was come, they brought him into the upper chamber, right? And all the widows stood by him weeping and showing the coats and garments which Dorcas made while she was with them, right? But Peter, see, cause look, Dorcas made a bunch of coat coats and garments, right? We in chapter, uh, we in, we in Acts, chapter nine, uh, verse thirty-nine. We in cha- uh, Acts, chapter nine, verse thirty-nine. So if you, if you don't have your book with you, make sure you have your book with you so that way you can uh be following along with the scriptures. Because you'll you'll retain about forty percent of more of what you actually see versus what you hear, right? So you definitely wanna be on following along so that way you can go, aha, you know, had an aha moment, you know what I'm saying? Cause if you're just watching me, it's not gonna help you. You need to, uh, you need to be kind of following along with the scriptures. And you can also add in, man, if you definitely, you know, you feel like you wanna add to what I'm saying. Um, if you got some precepts that you wanna add in on these, on this Bible study, uh, to kind of go along with what I'm saying with the scriptures. Feel free, man, to throw them in the comments, and then we, I'll I'll bring it out, and I'll grab the scripture and I'll bring it out. Uh, but right now, I'm just going along, but like I said, if you have questions, if you wanna, you know, add, you know, scriptures to the to the comment board, um, just add it right here in the bottom right here. And I'll definitely uh read it. I'll I'll get to it. Uh, so it says right here, then Peter arose and went with them, right? When he was come, they brought him to the upper chamber and all the widows stood by. So widows is basically women that are basically without husbands, right? Widows, or it could also mean that Israel is a widow, right? Cause they don't have the Most High, right? So it it's twofold, right? Cause the Bible is twofold, right? So uh, let's get the scripture on that. Let's get the scripture on how the Bible is a double-edged sword. So we're gonna talk about how widow could mean two different meanings, right? Because a lot of times, people, uh, they reading the Bible and they only have one side to the meaning, right? And so you don't wanna do that. Go get uh Hebrews, chapter four, verse twelve. Hebrews, chapter four, verse twelve, real quick, and so that way we can uh talk about this double-edged sword uh, real quick, because a lot of times we wanna get both the sides of the meaning to uh to the scriptures. It says, for the word of God is quick, right? It's powerful and sharper than any two-edged sword, piercing even to the dividing of thunder of soul and spirit and of the joints and marrow, and is a discerner of thoughts in the intents of heart, right? Because look, the word of God, man, is quick, it's powerful, man, right? It's sharp, right? It's two-edged, right? So when we talking about this widow in uh Acts, chapter nine, verse uh thirty-nine, chapter nine, verse thirty-nine. Let me write this down here. Acts, chapter uh nine, I'm gonna write it down in the comments. Acts nine, verse thirty-nine. It's it's uh, it's two-edged sword, right? So when we talking about this this widow right here in uh verse thirty-nine, we're talking about two different types of widows. Like, it's talking about then Peter arose with them, and when he was come, they brought him into the upper chamber and all the widows. Meaning, cause widows can be a woman that is, you know, without a husband, right? Or it can be Israel as a nation without a husband, right? So this can be twofold here, it's two different meanings. And so it says, and all the widows, right, stood by with him weeping and showing showing the coats and garments which Dorcas made, right, while she was with them. So she apparently made all these uh coats and garments, right? So if if she's making all these coats and garments, she's also a disciple of Christ, right? Because what she's really doing is, she's, she's basically teaching people the spirit of Christ. She's teaching them how to put on their coats, how to put on their garments, right? So it's a parable. It's saying that they, she was teaching, she was preaching, she was teaching. This actual, this woman was actually in the spirit. She was teaching her other brothers and sisters how to put on their coats and their garments. But in the time that she was doing it, she even got sick her own self. She got sick, right? So now we trying to help her out, cause she got sick. So just because you in the spirit of Christ don't mean that you can't get sick, right? And I'm not talking about sick like, well, I'm talking both sick, right? I'm talking sick like COVID nineteen. And I'm talking sick like, you know, sick in the mind, you know, going off temptation, that type of sick, right? Right? So it's two different, two different types of sick, right? And she opened her eyes, and when she saw Peter, she sat up, right? So now she saw, she seeing Peter, and she's sitting up, and he gave, he gave her his hand, right? So what he, what's really going on here? When you give somebody your hand in these scriptures, most of the time when you give somebody your hand, it's talking about building that person up. It's talking about strengthening that person, right? And it says, and lifted her up, right? So he lifted her up, and when he had called the saints and widows, presented her alive. So how she go from dead to alive? So she obviously wasn't really physically dead, right? She must have been dead in the spirit, right? And so uh now she is alive because she was doing all the work of the Most High. And she eventually, even herself, she ended up, you know, being weak and all this stuff. And so sometimes you need somebody to, you know, somebody else that's that's like-minded like you. You need somebody that's like-minded and in the same spirit and in the same body as you to to do what? To to lift you up, to give you and give you a hand, right? He lifted her up, and when he had called the saints and the widows, presented her alive. And it was known throughout all Joppa and believed in the Lord. See, they all believed in the Most High, man, after this. And it came to pass that he tarried many days in Joppa with one Simon a tanner, right? So let's get chapter ten, verse ten, Acts ten, verse one. It says, there was a certain man in Kazaria called Cornelius and Setirion of the band called the Italian band, right? A devout man, right? And and one that feared God with all his house, which gave much arms to the people and prayed to God always. Man, so this man was devout. He was, he prayed to God always, man, right? Okay, and he saw in a vision evi- evidently about the nine, about the ninth hour of the day, an angel of God coming into him, right? So he's seeing this this angel of the of the Most High coming into him, right? Saying unto him, Cornelius, right? And when he looked up on him, he was afraid and said, what is it? Lord, and he said unto him, thy prayers and thy arms are come up for a memorial before God, right? So he's saying that your your prayers and your arms have come up for a memorial. And it says, and now send me, send men to Joppa and call for one Simon, whose surname is Peter. So Simon's surname is Peter, right? Simon's surname is Peter. So if you don't know Simon or Peter, Peter is pretty much Acts, right? Uh, Paul and Peter, they're pretty much in the act, book of Acts. Uh, really, Paul, Paul is like your, you know, uh, everybody talk about Paul, right? Paul is a big time, if you haven't, you know, read up on Paul, man, read Acts, uh, read Acts three, chapter three. Dude is a beast. Oh, man, he's, he 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 a beast, man. Paul, Peter, both of them real good, right? So but uh, it says right here, and when he looked on him, he was afraid and said, what is it? The Most High, you know, Lord or whatever, and he said unto him, thy prayers and thy arms are come up for a memorial before God. So his prayers and his arms, that he was doing all these arms and all these, you know, uh, prayers. He said, that stuff has come up as a memorial before him, right? So he said, and now send men to Joppa and call for one Simon, whose surname is Peter. So now he's calling on Peter, he's calling on on on, uh, the Most High told him to call on Peter. And he lodged with Simon or Peter a tanner for a little while, right? Whose house is by the seaside, and he shall tell thee what do others do. Okay, so the Most High always telling, like, the Most High always, you know, telling the brothers, the disciples, uh, you know, the the uh devout man, the upright man, he's always telling them in a vision or he's always telling them in the, you know, to to uh, you know, to go talk to their brother, right? To go talk to some brother that they that they know, right? So go talk to this brother, go talk to Peter, go talk to, go talk to uh Simon, right? And he gonna tell you what you should do, right? Because you gotta understand, Peter is like a elder at this time. Peter is like a high priest at this time, right? And so Peter was in the Holy Spirit, right? So the Most High wanted him to go talk to, speak to Peter, right? And he lodged with uh Peter, uh, you know, a tanner, a small time, right? Whose house is by the seaside. He shall tell thee what do others to do, right? And when the angel who spoke unto Cornelius was departed, he called two of his house, his household servants and a devout soldier of them that waited on him continually, right? And when he had declared all these things unto them, he sent them to Joppa, right? And on the morrow, as they went on their journey and drew Niah into the city, Peter went up on the housetop to pray about the sixth hour, and he became very hungry and would have eaten, but while they wait, while they made ready, he fell into a trance, right? And saw, and saw heaven open in a certain vessel descending unto him as it had been great sheet knit at the four corners and let down to the earth, right? Wherein were all manner of four-footed beasts of the earth, right? And wild beasts and creeping things and files of the air, right? So and there came a voice to him, rise, Peter, kill and eat. Hmm, interesting. So basically what this is saying is, okay, cause this is, when you start seeing stuff like this, like forfeited beasts of the earth, wild beasts and creeping things in the files of the air, that's when you wanna start using your precepts, you know what I'm saying? Because now you gotta go, man, what is they talking about? What is he saying right here, man? Right? Cause Peter is now in this this trance, and he he saw the heavens open. Meaning, when you see the heavens open, that means you started to walk in the spirit. That means you started to receive the spirit, right? You 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 going in a trance, and you're like, oh, right? And so now he's 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 about to start walking in the spirit, a certain vessel descended on him, right? See, that vessel, that certain vessel, man, as it had been a great sheet knit at the four corners, right? And let down to the earth, wherein all manner of four-footed beasts of the earth and wild beasts and creeping things and files of the air, right? And there came a voice to him, rise, Peter, kill and eat. So what is it talking about here? It's talking about Peter needs to rise, he needs to rise and eat, man, eat these wild beasts, eat these creeping things and these files of the air, man, right? But it says, and Peter said, not so, Lord, for I have never eaten anything that is common or unclean, right? See, so he's saying he ain't never eaten these things that are unclean, man, right? He he's like, I can't do this. I I've never eaten anything that's unclean like this, right? Uh, and the voice was spake unto him again the second time, what God had cleansed that called not to come. What, right? So this was done thr- three times, and the vessel was received up again into heaven. Hmm, interesting. That is a serious parable right there. Uh, that is a serious pa- parable, okay? So if you guys are sticking with me here, that is a serious pa- parable right there. You, when you see something like that, that that's when you uh you immediately go, man, that's a parable, right? You should be, you should be knowing right away, if you see something like that, that's a parable. Because he's in a dream, he's in a trance, he's talking to God, he's 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 uh, he's going up to heaven, right? So and then he's saying that uh, for the, he spoke unto him again the second time, what God clean, what God had cleansed that called not to come. So you, see, you see, Peter said, I have never eaten anything that is common, right? Or unclean, right? So you gotta understand, God is saying what? I has cleansed that called not to come, right? This was done thrice, three times, and the vessel was received up again into heaven. Now, while Peter doubted in himself what this vision which he had seen should mean, right? Behold, the men which were sent from Cornelius had made inquiry for Simon's house and stood before the gate and called and asked where Simon, which was surname Peter, was lodged there, right? While Peter thought on the vision, the spirit said unto him, behold, three men seek thee, right? And okay, arise therefore and get thee down and go with thee, go with them, doubting nothing, for I have, for I have sent them. See, so the Most High said that, look, these three, these three men, you need to go with them, man, because I have sent these men, right? I have sent these men to you, and don't doubt, don't doubt these men, don't, don't ask no questions, right? He said, I have sent them, go with them, don't doubt nothing, right? That's what Peter, so he's telling that to Peter. Then Peter went down to the men which were sent unto him from Cornelius and said, behold, I am he whom ye seek. What is the cause wherefore ye are come? And they said, Cornelius, the centurion, a just man, right? And one that feared God and of a good report among all the nations of the dude was born from God by a holy angel to send for thee into his house and to hear the words of thee, right? Then, then then it says, called he them in, right? And lodged them. So Peter called them in, enlarged with them, started hanging with them. And on the morrow, Peter went away with them and certain brethren from Joppa accompanied with him, right? And the morrow, after they entered into Setaria and Cornelius waited for them and had called together his kinsmen and near friends, and as Peter coming in, Cornelius met him and fell down at his feet and worshiped him, right? So here we are, Cornelius is worshiping uh Peter, right? Cornelius, Cornelius is is worshiping Peter, right? And Pete, but Peter took him up, saying, stand up, I myself also am a man. Man. Man, y'all need to get your bibles out, man. If hopefully, give me a one in the comments, if y'all actually got your bibles out uh, and you actually are following along with Acts, chapter ten and verse twenty-six. Put a one in the comments because it is getting, it's getting hot, man. It's getting hot in here, man. Acts, chapter ten, verse twenty-six, man. It's getting hot in this thing, bro. It is getting hot, man. Y'all gotta get on this thing ASAP. Acts, chapter ten, verse twenty-six. Because look, Peter was so well-known within the community. He was so well-known within the, within the uh Israelite community that uh he was like a high priest kind of thing, right? So this man Cornelius that he met or whatever, um, yeah, this KKB, sixteen eleven, absolute. So uh, you go to Acts, chapter ten, verse uh twenty-six. Go to Acts, chapter ten, verse twenty-six, right? So, man, this is, it's getting heat, man. It's getting hot in here, man. I'm telling you, we getting hot in here. Man, so this man Cornelius met Peter, right? And he fell down at his feet and worshiped Peter, right? Cause this man had just, remember, Peter got the spirit of Christ, right? So he worshiped Peter, man. He felt all his need to worship him. But Peter said, nah, get up, man. Here's the thing, man, you know, you got a lot of camps, man. They out here putting, they out here making people kiss their feet, man, and telling them to worship a man, telling them to worship them, right? But Peter said, nah, I don't want you worshiping me, man, get up. See, y'all understand what's going on here, man. You see all these camps out here pushing that, that uh, that that white man stuff, man, and having them, having people lick them feet, right? You you know, kiss the feet and all that, bow down. See, you gotta understand, look. If you got the Holy Spirit, you ain't gonna be doing all that. Cause look, Peter had the Holy Spirit, right? And Peter took, this man worshiped Peter, he tried to kiss him, go down and bow down and do all this, worship him. Peter told him, chap- verse twenty-two, he say, but Peter took him up and saying, stand up. Peter said, stand up. Man, that's deep, bro. Peter said, stand up. Peter didn't want him to worship him, and that's the same thing I'm telling y'all right now, man. I don't want y'all worshiping me. This ain't about me. You see what I'm saying? This is not about me. This is about God, and that's what y'all have to understand, right? Let me write this in Acts, uh, I'm gonna get y'all the chapter, Acts, chapter ten, verse twenty-six. This is key, man. This is key. You missed this nugget. I don't know what to tell you. Acts, chapter ten, verse twenty-six. If you don't have your bibles out, you probably wanna get them out and go ahead and go along with the scriptures. I'm telling you, man, this is powerful stuff here. Cause you know how you see a lot of brothers always, you know, getting brothers to kiss their feet, right? On, you know, on YouTube, put a one or whatever, if y'all know what I'm talking about, right? Y'all see all these camp brothers out here telling people to kiss their feet, right? Bow down to them, right? You you you, I know y'all see that all the time, right? So if y'all seeing that, put a one in the comments, if y'all see stuff like that, put a one in the comments and let me know if y'all see uh brothers out here telling people to kiss their feet. And I'm finna give y'all the scripture right now, that's for the debunk all of that. I'm finna give y'all the scripture that's for the debunk all of that. Acts, chapter ten, verse twenty-six. If you in the Holy Spirit, you not gonna be telling people to, uh, you not gonna be telling people to uh kiss your feet, bow down to you as a man. Let me go ahead and read that to you one more time. I'm going back up, verse twenty-five. Let me go ahead and read that to you one more time, I'm going back up, verse twenty-five here. And Peter was coming in, right? Cornelius met this man Peter, which is in the Holy Spirit, and fell down at his feet and worshiped him, right? Same thing these camps do, right? Telling people to bow down, kiss their feet, right? But Peter took him up, Peter brought him up, brought him up, saying, "Stand up. I myself also am a man." That's verse twenty-six. He said, "I myself also is a mortal man." He said, "Don't worship me." See, that's what you supposed to be telling people, man, when you in the, if you in the true Spirit of Christ, you supposed to be telling people to not worship you, right? You supposed to be telling people to not worship you, you supposed to be telling people to not worship you. You supposed to be telling people to worship God, you supposed to be telling people to worship Yahweh, right? And his son Yahweh Shabbos, the Spirit. So if you not telling people to do that, and you telling people to kiss your feet, that means you telling people to worship you. That is a cut to all these brothers, these camps out here that's telling people to kiss their feet. That is a cut, Acts, chapter ten, verse twenty-six. Put it back, put somebody on this live, put that scripture, Acts, chapter ten, verse twenty-six in the comments, let me know that y'all listening, and that y'all getting this worried, man, cause I'm telling you, what you're, what you, what you, what you uh, whoever you influenced by, probably wanna change, man. Verse twenty-seven, it says, "As, and, and as he talked with him, he went in and found many that would come together," right? So this man, all he wanted to do was talk to him, man. He's talking to this brother, he's not telling this brother to kiss his feet. He's saying, "Look, man, you are a mortal man, I'm a mortal man, man, look, all we finna do is we finna just dialogue with each other. We just for to have a conversation with each other, that's it. I'm not for to have you kissing my feet, you come to me in a camp in Mama Street, and I'm talking to you, and I'm telling you, I'm gonna tell you, man, let's just talk, you know? What questions do you have, and different things like that? I'm not for to be telling you to kiss my feet and all this stuff, man." So anyway, verse twenty-seven says, "As he talked with him, he went in and found many that would come together. And he said unto him, 'Ye know how that is. It is unlawful thing for a man that is a Jew to keep company or come unto one another, one, one of another nation. But God showed me that I should not call any man common or unclean.'" So this is the vision that he had, this is the vision that Peter was dreaming and having, and that he, it been, it's been revealed to God. It's been revealed to him what that dream is, this, what, what the, the beasts are, right? What all these noisy beasts, when you go back up to verse twelve. It says, "Wherein all manner of four-footed beasts of the earth and wild beasts and creeping things and files of the air." This is what that is, this is that dream he had, right? The, when the heavens open, right? And a certain vessel descended unto him, as it had been a great sheet knit at the four corners and let down to the earth. This is the dream that Peter couldn't underst- Gonna call me, and I don't sit here, oh, okay. Can you still hear me, man? Put, put a one in the comments if you can still hear me, because somebody just trying to call me, man, and uh, throw my entire, probably throw my voice, my, my, my sound off. Right, can you hear me? Put a one in the comments, put a one in the comments if you can hear me. So that way, I, 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 you can hear me, alright, awesome. Alright, so, "And there came a voice to him, 'Rise, Peter, kill and eat,' that's verse twelve and thirteen. So now we know what that wild beast is, that creeping thing is, right? In the files of the air, we know what that is now." So let's come on back down, let's jump back down uh, to where we was at, verse twenty-eight. So we gonna, we gonna come back down, we, so now we know what that vision was that Peter was dealing with, right? He's finna explain it to you right here. So that those wild beasts, those unclean things, all those people that, that, those are the strangers, the other people of the other nations, right? Those are the strangers of the other nations, tho- those are the Gentiles. Those are the people that are not in the Jerusalem, right? Not in the fold, right? They're not in the, they're not in the body, they unclean, right? They're uncircumcised, they're, they're unclean beasts, right? They're, they're, that's what we call them, unclean beasts, noisy beasts, and different things like that, right? So Peter is like, man, I'm not bringing them into my congregation, I'm not bringing them, but the Spirit, the Holy Spirit, told him to do something other than that, right? To do something otherwise. And it says right here, "And he said unto them, 'Ye know how that it is unlawful, it is unlawful thing for a man that is a Jew to keep company, right? Or come unto one another, another nation,' right? So it was unlawful, it was unlawful for a man, uh, uh, Jew to keep company with another nation, right? It's unclean, right? It's considered unclean, right? So let's keep reading, it says what? "But God showed me that I should not call any man common or unclean." So, the, Peter is saying, "Look, I should not call any man unclean, I should not call anybody unclean and uh, and common," right? He says, "Therefore came I unto you without gain sin. As soon as I was sent for, I asked therefore, for what intent ye have sent for me." Right, so he's saying, "Look, man, therefore I came I unto you without gain sin," right? Cause see, that's the problem, see, you got a lot of brothers and sisters out here, man, they always coming you with this gain sin, right? And you know, what's gain sin, right? Gain sin is like, you know, it, 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 people always got something to say, right? It's always something, people gotta say about something, right? So let's go get the definition of gain sin, because let's get a better understanding. Gain sin is like denying or contradicting the fact, or, you know, deny, dispute, disagree with, argue with, right? Contradict, right? Challenge. So, gain sin, let's go back to Acts, chapter ten, verse thirty. Uh, where is this, right here, it says uh, twenty-nine. Acts, chapter ten, verse twenty-nine, it says, "Therefore came I unto you without contradiction, without gain sin, right? Without trying to contradict what you're saying, right? As the most high told him to do, right? He said, "Don't doubt them," right? You, once you go to them, don't doubt them, right? And he said, "As soon as I was sent, I was sent for, I asked therefore, for what intent ye have sent for me," right? And so, and Cornelius said, "Four days ago, I was fasting unto this hour, and the ninth hour, I prayed in my house. And behold, a man stood before me in bright clothing, right? And said, 'Cornelius, thy prayer is heard, and thy arms are had in remembrance of the sight of God.'" And he said, "Send therefore to Joppa, to, and call hither Simon, whose surname is Peter. He is lodged in the house of one of uh, one Simon a Tanner by the seaside, who when he come it shall speak unto thee." So this brother Cornelius was told in this, in a dream, that he was going to, that, that Peter was gonna be the one to speak to him, right? So they finally met up, and now here they are talking to each other, and he's telling Peter what God told him. He's literally telling Peter what God told him. If you not, if you just now joining, uh, you know, get uh, get Acts, chapter ten, verse twenty, uh, verse thirty-two. "Send forth to Joppa and call hither Simon, or Peter, that Simon is called Peter, whose surname is Peter. He is lodged in the house of one Simon a Tanner by the seaside, who when he come it shall speak unto thee." Right, so thirty-three, verse thirty-three, it says, "Immediately therefore I sent to thee, and do hast well done that, do art come." Now therefore, are we all here present before God, to hear all things that are commanded thee of God, right? So these, these Gentiles, these people, Cornelius, all these people, these are the Gentiles that's coming to Peter and saying, "Look, uh, God told us to come to you, to, to, to talk to you," right? So the most high gonna put that spirit on these Gentiles to start coming to the Israelites, man. He gonna put that spirit on the Gentiles to start coming to the, to, to the people with the Holy Spirit, man. And they gonna start coming eventually. Man, woo, man, if you not on this live, I don't know what to tell you. I don't know what to tell you, man. It's getting deep. Oh, man, it's getting deep, man. But look, I'm finna do another live right after this, cause I, I do this one for one hour, then I do another one for one hour. Uh, and so uh, I usually do like a full two hours every day. So uh, I only got about forty-three seconds left. So, but we gonna stop here at Acts, uh, chapter ten, verse uh, thirty-two. Oh my goodness, and then we gonna jump back to Acts, chapter ten, verse thirty-three on the next live. So if you uh, if you on right now, uh, thank you for joining, and like I said, we gonna, I'm gonna jump back on, I'm finna do another live. Uh, so if you guys wanna get back on and join me on that live, we finna go right back through uh, chap- uh, verse thirty-three, okay? And then, we gonna go from there. So uh-